All right, good evening, everybody. My apologies for being late. All right, so, let's see. Today's September 14th at 7:30, five. And this is the Newbury zoning board of appeals. I'm going to introduce everybody up here. I'm Eric Swan, the chair. Michelle Wiegler, who is an associate member. Larry Murphy is our liaison from the planning board. Mario Navali, who is a member. Jack Kelly, who is a member.
For three years.
Martha Taylor is our town planner. And our excellent assistant is Chrissy Brophy. All right, I knew Jack was gonna have a moment there. So with that, we're going to open the meeting. And Mario, would you please?
Yep. Brian and Helen Buah, 134 Northern Boulevard Plum Island. Applicants are requesting a special permit for relief of section 97-4D, 5C, 02 upward extension, and from section 97, 4D, 4A, change of use of the Newbury zoning bylaws, and any other permit relief as may be required in the town of Newbury zoning bylaws to allow for the proposed use project in order to alter renovate the pre-existing commercial restaurant store into a single-family dwelling with an increase in height but with conformance on the property located at 174 Boulevard Plum Island, Newbury, Mass.
All right. This is a continued hearing from August 17th. Continued discussion on the town's bylaws and definition of lot floors, stories, change of use, and determining bedrooms allowed. So with that, on the last hearing, we had discussion. That discussion led to several questions. We said we would seek information from town council for ourselves and also from town building inspector. So with those items, I had, I know that town council talked to the building inspector. I talked to both town council and building inspector. I don't know if you had a chance to speak to either?
We did talk to them.
Okay. And I also talk to Martha quite regularly about a lot of times. So with that, the, I guess I'll go through some of the discussions, try to add some clarification from that discussion. We will ask if there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak in favor or against if there's anything new to say, if you've already said it and we have it, we have it on the record. And then we ask the applicant for any response or any update from that, and then the board will go and discuss it. So it's pretty straightforward. Okay. So before us is, the property is a non-conforming commercial use as it stands today. That is a, it's not listed as an allowable use, but since it exists, it's existing non-conforming. So to go from, by right, you have the right to go from a non-conforming use to allowable use, and a single-family dwelling is listed as an allowable use under the P-I-O-D. So the Plum Island, P-I-O-D, 947- D, part two, says allowable uses, A is municipal uses, B is single-family dwelling subject to dimensional requirements set forth in the table below, and then it lists maximum height, maximum number of stories, maximum height 35 feet, maximum stories two, maximum floor area ratio, and maximum lot coverage by buildings. Buildings, coverage of anything built on the site. So with that, the status of a non-conforming going to a single-family in the opinion of the building inspector is that the rights or the existing structure by going to, from a non-conforming to a allowable conforming use, those, that structure can be maintained. Now, I will also say that the, in discussions with building inspector, we don't always agree on certain things, and we recognize that each, you know, the board, myself, and the building inspector don't always, don't always agree, but I, we did ask, and so am stating his opinion. Secondly, the next was the understanding of bedrooms. And so the number of allowable bedrooms is listed in the, in the P-I-O-D, under section D, 5, D, which is additional bedrooms. It says non-conforming single and two-family residential structures, B is additional bedrooms, where one additional bedroom may be created in a lawfully pre-existing non-conforming single or two-family structure with one or two bedrooms, subject to the applicable regulations set forth in the second two subsections, C and D. C is by right, meaning that if you are altering or reconstructuring your, the structure that exists, where there's no increase of footprint and there's no increase of height, then the building inspector may, may sign off and approve that plan. D is requiring a special permit, and that is for the alteration, reconstruction, extension, change of, or change to such structure to the extent other than authorized by section C above, by finding of the board. And the alteration, reconstruction, extension, or change shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming structure to the neighborhood or the P-I-O-D. So that is by a special permit. It is not the demolition of as by right under E, and it's not the demolition, rebuilding after finding F. So the alteration, the catch in the, or the interpretation, I should say, between the building inspector and what the board looks at is that alteration, reconstruction, and then extension is, is a matter of how much of the existing structure you're keeping. At some point, if you're not keeping enough, you are demolishing the structure, and by demolishing the structure and rebuilding after finding, there are two sections. One is you're not going to exceed, and the other is you are going to exceed. So in the matter of opinion of what has been proposed, we are under section 97-4D, 5F, catastrophe or demolition, rebuilding after a finding, a non-conforming, single-family, two-family residential structure may be demolished and rebuilt, or rebuilt after destroyed by damage or catastrophe, so as to exceed the total volume of all demolished or destroyed structures on the locus, or exceed the height of the tallest demolished or destroyed structure on the locus upon the finding of the board of appeals. And upon the application, the building inspector looked at the application and saying, "You are making an upward extension, and therefore you are denied, and therefore you have the right to the zoning board of appeals," and that's why your application is before us. So with that understanding of the number of allowable bedrooms, the building inspector interprets that a maximum of three bedrooms are allowed. If I happen to disagree with that in terms of the understanding, we'll, we'll speak to that, but that's his opinion, and we may find upon discussion the interpretation of what's listed under the section, because that, again, also, each of the sections talks about one additional bedroom. The third item that we were going to talk about is what is a story and what is a floor, and the definitions of 97-11D, which is the back part of our bylaws, lists all the definition, and they go over gross floor area. Basically, the gross floor area is, is everything within the walls, but space that is outside, quote, "the thermal envelope" is not counted as gross floor area. Gross floor area is important because the gross floor area divided by the lot gives you a floor area coverage. Floor area coverage, as specified at the beginning of the allowable uses for the P-I-O-D, tells you the metrics and proportions of the bylaws of what is allowable. If you have an allowable site that did not have a building on it and you went to build it, then we would be looking at, okay, what are the, what are the guidelines that you must meet in terms of the yard setbacks, and in terms of the lot coverage and the FAR are listed. So gross floor area definition is important to understand. And then story. You know, I'd have to say that the outside the thermal envelope is also conveyed in the building inspector's understanding that outside the thermal envelope is, is not habitable space. If you have an attic and the insulation is at the joists, and you go up into the attic and it's not heated, then it doesn't count as gross floor area because it's outside the thermal envelope. Jim, do you have a question?
Basements are the same in that, Mr. Chair?
No. So there is, there is a definition of story or a portion of a building, floor surface, a floor surface with a floor surface above is the definition of a story in the bylaw. The bylaw also has a definition of a basement in which... The basement, a portion of a basement that is partially or completely below grade, and that says C story above grade. So basement leads you to story above grade to see if it's actually a story or not. That's why that definition was, was listed, story above grade. Any story having a finished floor surface entirely above grade except that a basement shall be considered a story above grade where the finished floor of, the finished surface of that floor above the basement is, one, more than six feet above the grade plane, more than six feet above the finished ground level for more than 50% of the building, and more than 12 feet above the finished ground plane at any point. So if you have a sloping site and you get into the calculation of whether that's a real basement or whether that's a story, that's what a story above grade is, but the In the matter of setting the definition, the definition of story above grade is any story having a finished floor surface entirely above grade except that the basement shall be considered a story. So the, it's defining a basement or a lower level in which can be a story. The one definition or the interpretation between the two definitions I just read, that any, any finished floor having a surface that's at grade with a floor above would then be considered a story. And the only difference of opinion, I would say, between myself and the building inspector is, then again, outside the thermal envelope does being a habitable space. So those were the three items that were discussed. The other item discussed with the, with town council was the sewer betterments and what, what they entitled or what rights going from non-conforming or to allowed, and the response back is that that's not the purview of the zoning board, it is the assessor's, assessor's scope to deal with as to what betterments might be for, if you have a commercial use and you have several betterments and you're going to a single-family, you only need, or would then be allowed to have one. What happens, all that is, is dealt with with the assessor's office. Okay. So those were three plus one items that we had left as questions. Did I miss anything in your notes? Or your notes?
No.
Did I miss anything in your notes? So with that, we then have for discussion, I think, the, the non-conforming use to a single-family use, there's no question there. The fact that the structure is non-conforming, yard setbacks, frontage, lot cover, and FAR are allowable as they exist, therefore, discussion and interpretation is how they apply to the proposed, the proposed structure in that is what being, is what is being kept as existing that is over or non-conforming to the bylaws. Is that more, is that more detrimental to the neighborhood to be kept, or that that's the, that's the factor of the reasoning of understanding that needs to happen? Although there's, there's a lot written about the number of bedrooms, the, the one thing that I would think of or would say, that if you had an existing lot that's 9,000, 4,900 square feet, which is a buildable lot, and you don't have a house on it, and you went to the building inspector, he would, he would grant you three bedrooms. Now, just because the three bedrooms is granted doesn't mean that three bedrooms fit on the site. So each, just one, one line of the bylaw that is met or not met doesn't, may be undone or considered differently by another part of the bylaw, if that makes sense. So if the building inspector would grant up to three, saying that a typical single-family would have two, plus one is three. As I said, I'm not 100% agreeing with that, but that's the building inspector's interpretation, three bedrooms. Story above grade. So the question is, what is the first floor? In this case, exactly what is there in terms of gross floor area of the garage and of the space that is the entry space that brings you up? The other part about the story above grade... Is that the bylaws in 2015 went through a change because on Plum Island, we recognized that houses that were put up on pilings, raised up on pilings, didn't have a requirement, didn't have the space for, you know, simple storage for beach chairs and floats, and it just seemed unpractical, unpractical. And so the, the bylaws through the planning board were amended, and there is a section that says suspended basins, suspended basements, a storage area suspended below residential dwellings. So in that case, it was, it was considered to allow a space of 250 square feet or less outside the building walls, and not including mechanical space that would, that would be hung or put in that place. So there is a history of understanding what, what is a basement, and also a suspended basement leads back to the definition that I told you before. Can't quite find it, but I don't think the suspended basement counts as, as gross floor So I think that the questions before us are number bedrooms and the height of the structure, understanding how many stories are in the structure, and then, and then understanding that discussion, understanding the purpose of the P-I-O-D in the zoning, and what, what the intent of the, of these bylaws of the P-I-O-D are trying to do. So I think that's, that's the premise of what we're reviewing the application on, and the end result of, for the guiding purposes of the P-I-O-D for each of the sections or slightly different sections, is that such a finding shall be made upon the determination that proposed alteration to the non-conforming structure or use shall be substantially more, shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming structure or use to the neighborhood or the P-I-O-D. So, all right. With that, and that understanding and feedback from both the building inspector and town council, if I clearly relayed that, hopefully. Do you have any questions, or?
Um, I don't think I have any questions, no. Not based on that information, not from...
No, I'm good.
As I said before, go a little backwards, but do the applicants, I believe, you submitted additional information? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So can you, without summing up the whole project, can you just focus in on what you submitted as new, please, so that we can hear that for the record?
Oh, thank you. Good evening, you know, everybody. My name, excuse me, my name is Brian Buah, one of the applicants, my wife, Ellen, is here with me, the other applicant. And basically, a concern was mentioned about the appearance of the height of the structure. The structure is in compliance with the zoning regulations. However, what we decided to do and put it in writing to the board is, on the rooftop deck, we originally had it, it was for the solid parapet wall. So facing the street, what we're gonna do is insert glass panels, and also in the rear, we're gonna add glass panels, and that portion of the parapet wall, approximately four feet. The siding of the house would be shingles, however, in the top portion of the parapet wall, we're gonna, we're proposing to put in like a PVC board and baton, you know, to break up, to make the deck more definable as a deck, and give the appearance of, you know, not such a tall structure, like reducing in height. The other information that we provided, which we thought would be helpful, is in looking at the area, the general area around 134 Northern Boulevard, are those or butters that were notified were within like a 300-foot radius of same. What we did is did a quick zoning analysis of assessors' information as to what percentage of the structures within 300 feet were in compliance with respect to floor-to-area ratio and lot coverage. And our findings, which we provided a summary of such with the back of information, is that 70% of all structures parcels within 300 feet are non-compliant with either the floor-to-area ratio or the lot coverage. And of that 70%, of that 70%, 50% exceeded both lot coverage and floor-to-area ratio. And along Northern Boulevard, pretty much every structure parcel along Northern Boulevard was in lot compliance, and that's really a new information. Thank you.
So the information provided is the assessor's card that lists the square footage and the I know we received this by email a few days, but I didn't, I've not been able to look at it. Do you have any, so what you're saying is all these are on the 300-foot radius of notification?
Correct.
Yeah, I had a chance to review it, I, you know, I didn't think the, the concern was the non-conforming bar, more about the bedrooms and the stories.
Okay.
I agree. I did look at it, yeah, through the email, yeah.
Okay.
But it seemed as Mario, it was more of the, the height, I think.
You don't have a quick summary of the adjacent sort of neighbors, because I think that the... Well, thank you for that, thank you for going for the lengthy research of all of those properties, and in terms, the...
What percentage did he say? So I find that out very hard, I believe.
So it's listed, and it's, it's here, but the data's a little hard to assess in terms of not applying it to lots that were, are in the adjacency or area, and certainly there are some in here that, the first one we looked at says that the R is 11.2, and the lot coverage is 16.7, so they're obviously below.
Look at the year.
How much is their lot size?
2004 is when it changed. So there's a, a lot of them were done in 2000 before that date.
So, and that is, this, in terms of understanding the adjacencies and, and quote, "the neighborhood" and what the board understands to be the immediate neighborhood in which we're, we're judging against what I read previously, shall not be more detrimental, substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming structure or use to the neighborhood or the P-I-O-D, is understanding how the proposed, how the proposed fits in with the existing. If, again, if of the non-conforming use, if you were to take the existing building and not extend the height, and not extend any of the, of the volume of the building, you'd be, you wouldn't be here, you'd be through the building inspector and his judgment as to giving you a building permit, and you'd be able to do that by right. So as soon as you extend upward, then it comes back to us in terms of that understanding. Okay. So before the board goes into discussion, is there anybody here that has, that is new to the record and has something new that, that...
Of course, we're, we're new. This is our first meeting.
Okay.
So, myself and this lady in yellow.
Yes, the little lady in yellow, if you stand up.
We're both...
And you would just, you're not...
Hi. And I sit down now, my name is Judith Hughes.
Okay. Your address?
Number eight and number 10 43rd Street.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. I always was under the impression that the square footage of the lot size predicated the square footage that you are allowed in the house, and I just went through it on renovations with number eight, 43rd Street, and it was not allowed to be taken down. I had to go with the existing footprint. I had to go with the existing footprint, and it took like three years to accomplish it because of the lot size was nonconforming. So we adhered to that, dealt with Doug Packer and Sam Jocelyn, and we did everything. And I always thought the Newbury zoning board was very strict with their values and their restrictions, and that's why Plum Island is what it is today.
So, Judy, if you have an existing lot, as I said before, if you have a lot that's unbuilt and it meets the required size minimum, which is 4,000 square feet, and you want to build a house, there are guidelines within the P I O D that, that state the 35 feet, the two stories, the .25 for the floor area and .2 for the maximum lot coverage, and then there are yard setbacks that must be met. Because...
It has no setbacks.
On an existing, on a property that's unbuilt, you must meet those because those are the guidelines to start building something.
There was a house in the...
Hang on. If you have an existing structure, the board, the town, the state cannot take away what is legally nonconforming, and you have the right to, to renovate that or change that without changing the size of the volume. And then there are several other sections of the bylaws that says if you want to extend upwards and/or outwards, but you want to keep what's there, if you want to demolish it or if, if by some reason catastrophe, fire, or the ocean takes your house away, you then have other rights that are listed separately within, within the bylaws. So, because properties on Plum Island have a lot of varied existing conditions, some of the weirdest or the ones that are most noncompliant is where a structure is actually built physically on the neighbor's property. When you come before the, the Z B A, because the building inspector rejects your building permit application, it is then the guidance of the P I O D and the, and the several sections which determine what you're actually seeking to do and the, the end or overall arching determination for the board, and it's listed in each of the three different sections, whether it's an extension, whether it's a catastrophe, whether it's just, you just want to demolish it and rebuild it new, is that the existing nonconforming, is that the, the extension or change or demolition shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconforming structure to the neighborhood or the P I O D. So that is the, the ultimate or end factor that we're basing the decision on. And, you know, we're, we're, we're all residents, you're all residents, we, we understand that you got the property and that things need to happen and you want to update it, we're not, we're not here to stop anybody, but we are here to try to control underneath the P I O D and the bylaws in general, so that everybody has a fair shot of doing the same thing. And we would like not to grant or give somebody rights within, that the next, the next person couldn't do. That's not, that's not fair and that's not the intent of the bylaws. The bylaws are, are guidance to give general shape and, and form so that Plum Island can be improved and for the purpose is to reduce damage to public and private property resulting from floodwaters, ensure public safety by reducing threats to life and personal injury, eliminate costs associated with the response to cleanup and flooding conditions, and preserve open space, limit the expansion of nonconforming single and two-family structures so as to prevent the exacerbation of the existing problems of, with density and intensity of use. So we are trying to improve Plum Island for all so that the, the density of structures and the intensity of use is lessened, and a big part of that is lessening it so that the sewer system that has been put in is not overtaxed by development that is oversized for the lots. And if, if it wasn't checked, then the sewer system would need to be updated again, and those people that abided by and paid for their betterments would find another betterment because someone else built too much. So we're trying to, or the bylaws are, are trying, are set up to control that. Did I answer your question?
It doesn't, it doesn't, because when we were contemplating doing renovations on a, a housebound lot, I mean, it's, there were no setbacks, I mean, it was just on there. If we wanted to do the teardown and raise it up and do it on the steel pilings, we were going to be limited to this 800, was it 875 square feet?
Six hundred square feet.
Which was in conformity with the size of the lot and what we could have. So therefore, we stayed with using the same existing structure, which I think is sort of what you're saying, but we were conforming and you're saying they're nonconforming so they can do things differently than the people who conformed? I, I don't understand.
It sets a bad precedent.
So we don't, we, we, we don't set precedent here because we are making the determination of the adjacent, of the immediate neighborhood with the intent of trying to meet the purpose. So, I, I hear what you're saying, I think people are hearing what you're saying without knowing and looking back on the exact application and what you did, I don't, I don't know the finer points, but there are people who have existing structures that are close to the property lines that want to do something, and we, we try and, and work with them to, to make it better and to improve it, and it's based on the improvement is not worsening the situation within, quote, the neighborhood.
Why can't they just keep the footprint that's there and go with that, as opposed to going three stories up with the perimeters and peripherals and all that?
Everybody has, you know, we're not here to judge design. You know, everybody wants to improve their, their property their own way for, for many different reasons.
There's taste involved, too.
Yep. And, and whether people are going to, be careful I say this, but, you know, who's gonna live it and how you're gonna use it is also not a purview of the, the zoning board. I mean, we like to hear it, but it's not something that, that's written that we can pass judgment on. There are other sections of the bylaw where if you are providing accessory apartment for senior or disabled or people, that it's actually a favorable thing that helps, helps the understanding of what you're attempting to do. That's, that's not the case on Plum Island, P I O D.
So the rules I had to adhere to are kind of inflexed these days?
No, the rules of your lot for what you proposed for what was judged against your immediate neighborhood is, is how that decision would likely make.
We're in the immediate neighborhood, we're three houses up the street.
Okay, so that, that adds a little bit to that. Again, without going back and looking...
It wasn't that long ago either.
If it was Sam, I don't know how many years.
It was, it was 30 years ago. And I think that's what I find most frustrating is that I had to adhere to rules and, and I, I appreciate what, what they're doing and I want to be with the ocean, but I was not allowed to, to, I was not given any special accommodation, so I'm not sure why someone else coming in would be granted that.
Which we...
And by the way, the 70% of houses outside of, I renovated four years ago, I stayed within the rules. There haven't been any other renovations in the immediate area that exceed this. I don't know where this 70% is coming from. I think that's a mis, I think that's a mistake.
Sneaky.
So, again, and we can speak, speak to that in a, a minute. In terms of the application, the application is, is stating that the existing lot coverage and the existing F A R are being reduced by the proposed new structure. Right?
That's correct.
Yes, sir. Getting to the gross building area, it does, it does seem, Brian, going over the calculations, maybe we should just walk through that again, but just understanding that that is truly the case. But, okay, so is there anybody else that would you like to, in the thing, to speak? No, you've spoken before.
I, I just want to answer his question, would he went around 300 feet from around the buildings? I'm looking at the paper here, most of them houses that he's talking about are noncompliant, were built in 1925, 1936, none of whom before, after 2004 when the laws commenced.
So, true, but I, I think, I'm not trying to make your point for you, but your point is, is that there's a lot of nonconformities within the neighborhood already.
So when's enough? When do you stop? When do you say no and not give somebody's...
That's an excellent question. So, in, in terms of why we've taken several meetings, why we've, we've gone to talk to the building inspector and why we've gone to talk to town council is to make sure that we have the correct understanding and definitions of what's, what is the intent and how the interpretation, at least from the building apartments view and from town council's view, and then it, it still comes down to the board's understanding of what is proposed and, and how that relates to the neighborhood. So, and we, we just can't say that we don't like it, and we can't say that we don't like the color of it. And so trying to understand the definitions and, and taking the lengthy time to, to, to read the definitions is part of the understanding of, of how the board would discuss and make a decision. I will say that the Z B A is a little difficult because we only have three voting members and we're not allowed to call each other, and I can't call Michelle and say like, "What do you, what do you think?" So we're here having the debate in front of you, where other boards, there might be two people, if they have five or seven people on a board, they're allowed to meet and discuss because they're not violating the open meeting law. So if it seems we're a little back and forth and we're kind of dragging it out a little bit, we are because we're trying to come to an understanding, and the only time we have to do that is when we're in front of you. So, I, I would, nobody's complained, but I just, just clarifying that. So...
Hi, Doug Anderson.
Do, uh, street, please?
Uh, 446th Street. My question is, I, I know how to add, and when I come up with all the square footage, and I'm counting the first floor, and I call it four floors, because I don't know if you call that a doghouse on top or a penthouse, but it says right in the guidelines, they include penthouses. And I've been in the building trades for 46 years, and we always, always used to call a building on a flat roof a penthouse. I know it's a living, and if you're looking up in the dictionary, it's called a, a living space on a roof, but I still say it's four floors. And you were talking about it's an elevated cellar? Is that what you said about? Are we calling this three stories, or two stories, or four stories? What are we calling this structure?
So that, that is part of the discussion that we're having at the moment?
Okay.
And, and the definition. There is not, I'm pretty sure there's not a...
Because it says in the guidelines, on Plum Island, you can only have two stories.
So, you know, we're a small town, we have zoning, it's not perfect, there are things that need to be, and can be updated, and every, and actually, we were in the process last spring of walking through and reading the zoning to see if there were things that could be clarified for the benefit of everybody with town council, and that's still in, in process. Anything that gets changed has to go before the annual town meeting for all the residents to vote before anything gets adopted, so it's, we, we just don't come up with things to be changed and to get changed. There is no definition of penthouse, but you're right, but the, the roof deck stair has come up numerous times, and we have asked town council before, and town council says if the, if the stair up to the roof is, is the same size as the landing at the top is the same size of the stair, then it doesn't count as a, as a floor or landing.
Okay, but now, are we counting studs? Are we counting outside dimensions for square footage? Are we counting staircases? Are we, are we counting everything here?
So, again, it says within, shall mean gross floor area, gross, shall mean the total square footage of, total square feet of floor space under a roof within the outside dimensions of a building, including each floor level, without production for hallways, stairs, closets, thickness of walls, columns, or other features, unfinished attics and suspended basements outside the thermal envelope shall not be counted as gross floor area.
Well, well, right on this F A R checklist, it says total square footage shall include all wall thicknesses.
Yeah, so...
So I don't know, is that a gray area or, is that just spitting it or?
Brian, what is, what is your total gross area?
It's the exterior.
And what is it on the application?
He's calling it 1,692 square feet in the F A R checklist.
That's correct. Existing...
And I, and I, and I come up with 2,600, over 2,600 square feet if you count the first floor.
Are you referring to the garage?
Yes.
Okay.
In the, in the entryway?
I don't know.
Where you have some storage area?
The 1692 does include the entryway. It does not include the garage.
Okay, well, that's my, how do you, the other question I had was, if, if you have 1,862 square feet to start with, and you take 10 feet off the back, okay, and you end up with 935 square feet, how does that become nothing? How does that become no square footage? That's what my question is.
Sorry, hang on a second.
And that's, that's my question.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Okay, that was my question.
You have the garage.
Yeah, I didn't know if you were counting that or not. And I don't understand how, if you once had space to run a restaurant, that space becomes nothing? That 935 square feet becomes nothing?
So, Brian, when we look at this, we have, we have two lot coverages, they both say 81123 on the top. For the F A R, this says 1,692 square feet. Is that, is that the current one?
Yes, correct. On the top, it says revised 81123. Originally, we had, we were, we were leaving a 12 by 28-foot portion of the existing building on 43rd Street, and we were using that as living space. However, after the first meeting, we agreed to eliminate that. And as a result of that, that's what, where we came up with revised 81123 application. And the... And on that application, the correct square footage is 1,692 square feet. And the existing is 1,862, or approximately a 200-foot square foot reduction.
So, in terms of the living level, in terms of bedroom level, you take 729 square feet, multiply twice, and you take the 100 square feet of the, of the. Sorry, the 203 square feet of the lower level, you come up with your 1,692?
Yes.
Yes, and so then the enclosed garage space is another 867 square feet.
I'm not sure the garage measures 28 by 28.
So I think that's where the difference in the crux of the matter for me is.
It's 2559.
In terms of the, the size of keeping the existing, keeping the existing slab, and then going up two, two additional stories plus the first floor, counting as a floor. And if you count your flat roof, I mean, the flat roof brings it up to, if you talk to surface-wise, there's 3,000 square feet of flat surface on four levels. So I think, Brian, that we would say that, at least in, in my opinion, that there's the matter of size and appearance in terms of the density of what you're proposing is the issue that I'm going to discuss with the board.
Okay, if I could just add a comment. Let's. Exterior decks are not considered into the calculation of our floor, floor area. If it had a roof, like an enclosed porch, or a deck with a roof over it, yes, it would be. Our proposed deck does not have a roof. Thereby, it's not considered to be included as square footage for the building. And if I understand correctly, both the building inspector and town council has made a determination that it is a two-story building. First floor being a garage is not considered a story. And that three bedrooms are permissible for long, it's in keeping with your comment about making sure it's okay with the assessors office. So.
Yeah, and I guess, okay, so thank you for that. Then the board will discuss. We won't take any more public hearing here. We won't take any more, but we'll now discuss what we think.
Yeah, I mean, based on your interpretation of the upper floors and definitions, I think we consider the first floor a story.
The garage, I agree. I think the definition and bylaws, which also corresponds to the state building code definition of a story, I would call the garage a story. I would classify the garage as a story.
I have one.
So. And Brian, I think because it's enclosed, and because it has a slab on grade, and because we have a definition of a basement that counts as a story, if it's got certain features, it's not a basement. This is a slab on grade. It is a, a story. And where we have other bylaws that talk about hung basements or hung parts of the building below, below the floor level in which to, that are allowable for storage. And certainly, you need entry up into your house, and you need some mechanical utility space. The interpretation through the, the other definitions is that the first floor is a story. So that, we're.
If I could.
We're gonna keep discussing, and then we'll.
So if I could just ask one question of the board. With respect to what's considered an enclosure, how, you have a definition for that? Is it all four sides, three sides, two sides?
I think it starts with the finished floor surface, that the fact that you have a slab down there that you, that is impervious. And that finished floor surface has another floor surface above you means the, as Michelle said, the state definition of a story. And by, by reading what we have for definitions, it is interpreted as a story. And, and the difference is, in terms of the intent, again, from the P I O D, which is trying to protect against flooding and exasperating problems by being in a flood zone and having to put your building up on pilings in which you get two stories above that, you're, you're still within the height, but you don't have the enclosed space that, in my opinion, is the, meets the existing problems of density and the intensity of use.
Okay. Just for clarification, if not understood, the parcel of the building is not located in a flood zone. We pretty much doubled the permeability of the lot from our proposal. And so, I'm really not clear on what constitutes an enclosure. You mentioned as far as the floor is permeable. Wouldn't it be considered an enclosure?
I, I guess my opinion would be currently it is a story. It was used as a story. And all of a sudden, it just doesn't go away because you're living on top of it.
Yes.
That's my interpretation.
And what I was trying to say, Brian, is that with, with buildings, structures that are in the flood zone that must go up, there is, by nature, they are extending upwards, but they are not covering and they are allowing free flow of water and, and percolation through underneath the building. And, and you have a slab, and you have walls, and those walls are structural. And it looks like, and it, it meets the definition of being a story is it has a floor finish with another floor finish above it.
Sure.
And so with that, you have a mass of a building that seems greater in size. And I think the next part is that even though, yes, we can, we can agree or say that the interpretations of three bedrooms gives you the allowability to have three, three bedrooms of space, that doesn't mean that the three bedrooms of space are, are, are just allowed. They have space and size and density to them.
Okay, well, my understanding at this point is because there was an existing floor. You know, we've mentioned considering a floor where it's a concrete slab that we were wanting to utilize. However, if that's the criteria for making it a, a floor, then we'd have no problem in removing the slab.
And putting on pilings?
What about the walls too?
And putting on pilings, you mean?
That has nothing to do with the floor.
So.
It's just the walls.
You still have structural walls. That's not gonna, that. Yeah, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna say one way or the other. Well, I am, yeah. If you have structural walls that come down and touch the grade because they are gravity-bearing, then you are enclosing that surface. And you have blockage there for the, you know, for the flooding and, and density. And even if you just take out the slab and drive in through a garage door and have a enclosed garage with dirt, you're, you're, you still have a, I think you still have the issue of it being, it being too dense and just too big for the site. That's, that's my feeling. And the size and the shape and the fact that you've got a flat full roof over the top of it, even though it meets the definition of the height, it adds to the mass, and that mass is exacerbating the density. If you had a gabled or pitched roof, and you look at the immediate neighbors, and I have, I did look, and I've been a good amount of years several times now, and I'm looking at the adjacent neighbors, and it's hard to see that anybody's over two, two, two and a half stories in the neighborhood of what we're trying to look at. I mean, you have the, the house with the slope roof just south of you, and you have the blue house on the opposite side of the street that's like two, just two and a half stories with some low pitched roof, but it's still low pitched in terms of its, its scale. And then the other houses around you are all one story. So the, the, just the size of the structure with this understanding of enclosing the first floor and the garage and the entry for what you presented seems extremely large for the site. And as I had mentioned previously, the, the judgment of going back to and looking at, we're proposing 16, number is 1,692. 1,692 for the FAR. So if you take the site adjacent to you at 5,227 square feet, and you have an FAR of 25%, and they're gonna build new, they're gonna be limited to 1,306 square feet. You're at 1,692, and that's not counting the enclosed 867 square feet of the basement. And so with that, that, see, that to me is not meeting the intent. And it seems to be that what you proposed is just too big. You wanted to do it slightly smaller. You wanted to affect the shape in order to bring down the mass. And you changed the first floor to be on pilings and to be open. You could have some lattice and some to break away whatever meets the flooding requirements. Then, then we wouldn't count it as a story. And your, your, the size of what you're proposing would be, would be less. And if it's less, then it would seem to be more in keeping with the P I O D. It's not that you can't do anything. It's just that you can't do something so big. And the fact that you have this, this, this large structure, and you're changing from a commercial to a residential, you are making improvements, but it doesn't, the improvements do not seem to align with the existing surrounding neighborhood. That's my opinion, and Mario can speak, and Michelle can speak, yours. But that, that's where I'm coming from. And as a board, that's what I would, would say to the board. If I was to ask for a motion, it would be that the project that you've proposed is too big for the site.
Just, I imagine at once, just like, again, have a clarification on record that both the building inspector and town council has determined that it is a two-story structure, and three bedrooms are allowed. Is that correct?
They, it is the building inspector's opinion that three bedrooms would be allowed.
And that's two stories?
And it's not, it's not my opinion that, that you would just get three bedrooms when other properties would be judged to have two plus, would be judged to have one plus two.
Okay.
So that, that is the building inspector's opinion. Town council, that I understand what, what, what the building inspector's opinion is.
Sure. Now, you addressed the three bedrooms. Now, the number of stories, the building inspector, I read his letter, made the determination, and being the zoning enforcement officer, and that person who interprets the regulations as authorized by the state and the town has made the determination that it is a two-story, what we're proposing is a two-story structure, which would need zoning. Is that also the opinion of town council?
Maybe it's three stories.
Excuse me?
The, what town council had said. Town council didn't make a determination. They, they relayed what the building inspector had said.
Right, so they agree with the building inspector?
True. And, and what I'm telling you is that the, as, as a board member, reading and interpreting the bylaws, which is my position, is that I don't agree with the building inspector.
Sure. Everyone has their own opinions.
Yeah. And we, yeah, there is a process for the building inspector to make administrative decision and have it go before the ZBA for, for judgment. And there is, there is recourse of appeal after any decision is made.
Correct. Just wanted to state for clarification once again that the property is not located in a flood zone. However, it seems to be coming up, as far as concerned by any type of flooding and so forth, you know, we would be agreeable to removing the slab. And also, we could install flood vents that would normally be installed in structures that located within a flood zone. Again, as far as permeability, mentioning earlier, we're providing, we're doubling that by all the pavement we're removing, approximately 900 square feet of building. Floor area being removed.
For the record, the board does recognize that you've improved the metrics of floor area or, and lot coverage, and also the permeability of the site that had a much larger but lower structure to it. And also the driveway across the front for multiple parking spots. And those are all steps in the right direction to minimize but still the exacerbation of height by building on top of the existing structure just, just makes, and would, in my opinion, put the building out of scale and be an intensity of use. And the flat roof adds to that. And the flat roof may, may, and the stair up to the roof may be very right. You can, you know, we don't have a deck limitation on size in terms of the bylaw. But that, all that put together in the, in the massing and the size of the house, at the end of everything that you're presenting and everything that we're, we're reading and tried to go by guidance, it looks like, and feels like, and it is, might be the judgment, that it's an intensity of density of use. So that's, that's where we're coming at here. If you were, this house, obviously, on a different part of the island with a different neighborhood and a different set of parameters, would, would be viewed differently as other proposals have been judged in terms of their, their adjacencies of neighborhood.
Sure. No, I appreciate your opinion and opinions of others. To help us in the matter, can you refer to what particular zoning section that is, what you're referring to that is to make it too dense?
97 dash four, the Plum Island one purpose. Reduce the damage to public and private property resulting from flooding waters, ensuring public safety by reducing threats to life and personal injury, eliminating costs associated with the response to cleaning up flood conditions, preserve open space, and to limit the expansion of non-conforming, single and two-family structures so as to prevent the exacerbation of existing problems with the density of use. Then immediately after that, number two is allowed uses. And of those allowed uses, the single-family dwellings and the dimensional requirements set forth give us a maximum building height of 35 feet, maximum number stories of two, maximum floor ratio of 0.25, and a maximum lot coverage of 25%. From that, the section, and whether it's D, special permit, E, or F, they all say such a finding or special permit shall be made upon the determination that the proposed alterations to the non-conforming structure or use shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming structure or use of the neighborhood or the P I O D. So it's, it's in there. And the, the view that you're, you have an existing building, and you're trying to transform it, but it doesn't meet the allowed use and dimensional requirements. And then the assessment of what you are proposing against the neighborhood is the, is the, is the finding or the, or would be the decision that in my opinion, that it's, it's just too big. It's got too big of a mass. And part of that is, is the roof and the flat roof terrace on the, on the, on the top adds to that. And it's, it's this enclosed first floor. And it's it's this enclosed first floor, which is built on a structural, which is built on a slab for which the structure is coming down and sitting on the slab. That all adds to the density and the intensity. And yes, you're not in a flood zone. But then again, as I said in the beginning, we're not, we're not just saying that, okay, because you're not in a flood zone, you're allowed to do everything. There are other checks and balances in walking through the zoning. And that's, all those add up to the same understanding. And actually, what I was trying to say before is that some people who are in a flood zone actually get a little bit more of a benefit in in terms of raising the building up, still only having two stories. But they they are doing that because they are not exacerbating the problems. And if you are building on the ground and you're not in a flood zone, you know, we have had, the ocean does many things. And I don't think that's an argument to say that just because you're not in a flood zone yet, you can't be concerned about flooding waters or moving water. So if, you know, certainly you can do something in this location, but it would have to be different. And it would have to be different in size and scale and in keeping with the neighborhood. So as not to take the existing non-conformities, even though you've improved them, you're still taking extra in in terms of those non-conformities, which which in terms of what you've proposed, again, in my opinion, is an exacerbation of the of the existing problems of density and intensity of use. That that's where I stand. If you if you would propose modifications, then you you have to present plans to show exactly what the intent is there.
If just to make one last comment, if applied to the seventy percent of the neighborhood, such would have a, that's a matter of fact, to anyone wanting to improve their properties.
If they have an existing structure and it's it's non-conforming and they're not extending it or going upwards, they can they can renovate it and improve it all day long and just want to go into the building inspector.
Well, I also I also don't think, I mean, every site is different. You can't say, oh, because it doesn't work here means it's not going to work, you know, five blocks down. Every site's different. When you let, you know, I I walked around this property, the neighborhood, you know, to just get a feel for it. I was a pedestrian walking through neighbors or around neighbors' houses. And your immediate neighbors are all, many of them are still one-story houses. Some of them that have been altered are still only two-story houses. And this this ma- the massing of the proposed project, it would just loom over your neighbors. And I think, you know, this project on a different site would maybe have a different outcome. But we we have to look at it at its site and its location and its neighbors. And that goes back to whether it's a detriment to the neighborhood. So you're looking, you know, we're looking at Plum Island as a whole, but also your immediate neighbors. And, you know, so I don't think you can classify because it because, you know, we don't necessarily agree with this project in this location that it's not going to work anywhere else. You know, it's it's not blanketed like that.
So I think, oh, on Forty-third Street, by what your opinions of what constitutes a story, there are many three-story homes on Forty-third Street. For example, the immediate neighbor on the East Lee Side on Forty-third Street exceeds the lot coverage. Their twenty-five percent, we're proposing twenty-three percent. Number five, Forty-third Street, their Florida error ratio is sixty-four percent by your definition.
Built twenty-seven years ago.
I'm just presenting existing. And their lot coverage is thirty point two percent. The woman, are we?
Her third floor is not finished.
Oh, no, I'm just saying.
Finished.
Like, for example, the woman who was speaking, number eight Forty-third Street.
I'm eight Forty-third Street.
Eight Forty-third Street. Her Florida error ratio is sixty-nine point seven percent and her lot coverage was fifty-one.
It's an existing house that's been on, that was built in nineteen fifty.
Oh, that's correct.
And I renovated it to the T.
I'm not disagreeing with you.
But you're you're proposing to put a huge house up.
I I I think the difference is, you know, we have the P I O D now and there's rules and regulations in the P I O D. And they weren't there before. A lot of these houses left. I don't know the exact number.
Right.
I think that's.
Yeah, same up. As far as, one of the most important things that could be achieved in zoning is to have the uses be conforming. It's a really existing non-conforming, commercial restaurant store in an entirely residential neighborhood. That itself has merits beyond a hundred percent. And we are reducing the Florida area ratio. We are reducing lot coverage. We're more than doubling the permeability of the site. We're making how much green space, removing pavement. In terms of height, I don't understand, do people stick their heads out the window looking how high structures are? It's basically.
I don't want to look up the house.
Ground floor.
So.
If I could just.
You're here because of the exacerbation or the extension, upward extension of height.
Right.
And so that that height in in the form and the bulk and the and the size, even though you have improved it and there is some concern about, you know, if it's a commercial existent, commercial use, which which isn't bad on Plum Island, it's not allowed because of the calculation of the septic sewer system that went in. That in taking the commercial use and saying you're making it better by making it residential and then claiming the metrics of what was what was bad of what you're making better doesn't seem to 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 totally hold well. And if you're if you're making it a reduced size, you haven't, it doesn't seem you reduced it enough. And it's it's the shape and the form and the size of the house. And again, if the next door neighbor, which has a lot that's slightly bigger, can't, and it's undeveloped at the moment, but they certainly could develop it, but they would have to develop a house that's, the FAR would be like thirteen hundred compared to your almost seventeen hundred. You know, that's almost the size of a bedroom. That's that's the difference of 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 this, what creates the size and the mass. So it's if if you choose to to change it and try to reduce it and and think of how you would you would make it better in keeping in in terms of of size and bulk and certainly the first floor adds a lot to that, then, you know, then the board might have something to consider. But at at this point, in my opinion, which in terms of, I don't know what the others, but it as presented, it's it's too large and too too, the density is just too much. So with that, you, you know, the options are, you can ask for a motion and we could certainly try to make a motion. We could, you could withdraw. We could, and I think the best thing is is if you were to change it significantly in order to 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 be better in in keeping and not exacerbating the density, then then you'd have to present a different a different project.
I believe you're in accordance with all the regulations, meeting zoning requirements as far as height. And really, what's being discussed is what you would expect if you were in a overlay district, for example, like a historical district, part of a condominium association, having an architectural review panel, critiquing, you know, the size, the shape, the style of the house being built, whereas that doesn't exist for this lot. What does exist are the existing regulations. And we believe that, you know, we're fulfilling the intent of the bylaws. We are not exacerbating the non-conformities, lessing them and meeting zoning requirements. We more than doubled the setbacks in the RIA, made a RIA non-conforming setback of nine point eight feet to almost twenty feet. On the side, Forty-third Street, we increased that setback as well and also in the front. So in terms of intent, you know, we believe we're better than, you know, satisfied with the regulations.
Yeah, you you have done everything that you've said, but it is of the opinion that the the non-conforming that you that you have at the existing site, that would, that what you're proposing is substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming structure. The non-conforming structure certainly is larger and it is wider and it is it is one story. And the fact that you've reduced it but opted way up is the difference of of the opinion of existing problems with with density and intensity of use. And that that purpose and the and the and the written statement each time in each one of the different conditions that the filing should only be made upon the the determination that both alterations to the non-conforming structure or use shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming structure or use to the neighborhood and to the P I O D. And so it's a sizing and massing in that location. And it is, as Michelle said and I've said, that that house somewhere else in a in a different built-up area of Plum Island with its adjacencies would likely or could likely fit in. So we're at we're at the point of 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 a decision to to make a motion or to to make, make a decision.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to deny the special permit due to the current proposed structure would be an expansion of the non-conforming structure with an exaggerated disaster renovation problem of density and intensity would be more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Is there any discussion on that? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All is fair. Aye.
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 It's the proposed amount of flooding that could be, could be had.
I'm well, how are you?
The flooding issue can be more intense and application. You're receiving a push of water that's over higher velocities.
Thank you.
So you're on the ocean side.
Okay, nice to meet you guys.
Thank you very much. We appreciate everything.
Same here. Thank you.
But it's their their determine. I don't have the team to have to look at it, but you're either in the flood zone or you're in a higher velocity zone.
Too far away.
Oh, wow. That's the start.
All right, Chrissy, we're going to get, we're going to get to the other business.
Okay.
Board's Discussion on Public Records Request for two twenty-two approved E B project ten ten street.
All right, so.
So Paul Novak has sent us an email, I believe on the seventh, for public record information. He sent out many in for fire department records of the fire that happened with the dwelling. And we directed the town clerk's phone dead on to the correct departments to answer those. I have sent him the decision and all the site plans. Now he's looking for all the meeting minutes from April, May, June and July of last year. He wants the meeting minutes and my personal notes from the meeting because I believe he's going into the second year of the appeal.
Okay. So in looking up the public records law, if I, in what I read and also asked Lisa, town council, Lisa Meehan, town council, if you have notes, documents that are are taken or made that are or will be, has been submitted as public record and we draw on them or if if we draw with somebody here on a drawing that was submitted, that we're making documentation of of a discussion and therefore that's part of public record. My, and and if Chrissy has notes and the notes aren't transcribed, those notes are still part of the public record. I might say, I'll tell them, my notes have been transcribed and approved by the board. Here's here's the public record that was issued. My notes at that point are 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 surpassed by the the public record. If I keep my own notebook and I don't share it with you or you for part of discussion, then this notebook is is not public record. It's my personal notes. It's not being discussed. It's not being disseminated. It's just me keeping things together. If if I make or we have a discussion and I record notes on how to proceed, how to create a proceeding with chapter forty B and the intent is that those notes are then given to, for something to be created, then I would consider those notes as part of the public record because they are they are being made and documented with the intent of becoming the public record. And so they're 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 part of what's there. The footnote or the argument would be is those, yes, those are notes. They were not reviewed and approved by the board. So they are of the opinion of the administrative assistant. Larry or Martha, you got an opinion on that?
I I I know that there is an exception in the public records law for personal notes. Exactly how to define those, I I I couldn't tell you off the top of my head.
And any public record notes that deal with, I don't know exactly how to say it, but if they deal with like personal records or I have notes that I'm taking on somebody's health, then those are excluded because they they contain personal information that shouldn't be part of the record. If I'm taking notes and we go into executive session, then I can't come out and someone says, I want to see your notes. Because we were in executive session. So there are a couple, few narrowly defined, narrowly, narrow items that are not considered public record.
I I I don't want to be overly, I agree with you. I'd phrase it differently.
Okay.
Everything's a public record. There are certain public records that are exempt from disclosure.
Okay, there are few, a a small few that are exempt.
That's the way I would phrase it.
Yes.
But it, you get to the same place.
So wait a minute. So you said on public submittals, like, let's say, for instance, that I had made some notes, which I didn't, on these drawings, you know, like something about a bedroom or something, would those be part of the public record?
When, and it has happened less frequently, but we used to have or did in the past, have somebody come up with a plan and we're like, if you just remove the door and it's not a bedroom, then then we would make a motion to approve. Let's cross out the door. Let's initial it. You initial it. We all accept it. This this is now administrative assistant, part of the public record. That that kind of action.
Okay, understood. So you're allowed to make, question this or something.
You don't share it with anybody.
Right, okay. Very good.
Yeah, and we used to take sometimes the form or the application and cross things out. Like, I added it up and it's two thousand. It's not nineteen hundred. Cross it out and we'd amend it. And then we'd ask that that be made. We used to stamp every. We did that when we first started and it disappeared with the taking of the document and the decision, and when we got the decision, the decision always had the documents with it, and that was, that was what you were signing, was the whole packet, so to speak.
Right, because it references that final plan.
Yes.
As the approved plan.
Right. Okay, was there another, so if he is, someone is asking for your meeting notes that you took specifically to do the meeting, then I would say that those are available as public record as much as the video, if there was a video of it, are public record as equally as any notes that were formally typed up and reviewed and approved by the board.
Never transcribed and written up, but never approved by the board. But the decision was, and he has that, so Martha made a comment, maybe we could put like a watermark draft on them or?
Yeah, I think you most certainly can, and say, put a watermark over them that says these are meeting notes taken by the administrative decision that have not been formalized and have not been reviewed and/or approved by any board members.
Can I ask a question? Is this involving litigation against the town, or is it litigation among?
Is appealing a decision that was, that was made against the neighbor.
So, but the town's a party to it?
Yes.
Okay. And what I was gonna suggest is this probably all should go through town council, rather than have each border entity, you know, answering separately, so that everybody's on the same page. Town council might look at that and say, no, Chrissy's notes are not public.
So I did mention that to Lisa, I believe that that's what she said, but who is the document control officer for the town?
Depends on who it's addressed to. Gretchen is the public records officer.
Access officer.
For us, I think the police chief is for any public records requests for the police department.
Actually, this one came in from Paul directly to my email, but it was dated, so, and it said federal or Freedom of Information Act request, so we did do that in the subject line.
Right, but technically it should actually go to Gretchen, or if you get one, it should go to her, because she's the keeper.
So let's copy your notes, let's put the title on it, let's hand it to Gretchen, and let's ask Gretchen to, in her position, to validate the appropriateness of turning over what you're giving her. And then she'll have in front of you what you're, what you believe you were asked to give, and she can make the final decision.
She'll probably want to consult the town council.
And if she wants to, but it's her, she's the, what did I say, document officer?
The public records.
Access officer, right, access officer, very good. So in that position, she would have the final say.
Okay. And when we do get requests, we copy the, we copy her on every submittal, every reply.
Yeah, because I think she actually, she has to log it.
She has to stamp it in, so that, if she doesn't stamp it in, there's technically no date on it, even if you got an email.
That would be it.
That says, right, I mean, if you, they can argue in a court of law, I sent Chrissy this email on the fifth, but it's like, well, did it go to town council? Does town council have a record of it? Does the document control officer for the town, did you notify them?
She makes a record of it, and then she also makes a record of when the request has been satisfied or responded to.
Right, so anything and everything in town that has a date, that has a date associated with it has to go to the clerk, otherwise we won't be making stuff up.
I can always email Paul on Monday and let him know that he has to go through Gretchen, but I did answer back to him and said received, so it was within the.
I mean, if it comes to you, as long as it goes to Gretchen, so she's, she knows about it.
Right, didn't CC her yet on this one.
Okay.
It's kind of curious that they wouldn't go through it just as a discover request through the court process, which would go to the opposing council, who would then, seems cleaner to do it that way when you're in litigation, but I'm not saying they can't do it this way.
He's also on the butter in an attorney, so.
Oh, I know, I remember the guy now. Yep.
Right, and so, you know, we, I don't think we ever maliciously tried not to help everybody out, but we are trying to follow the rules, and sometimes we just don't know the rules, and sometimes we're trying to figure it out, so.
But when you're talking about public, I mean, I was the public access, public records access officer for Andover for a number of years, and it's very important that you centralize, you know, you have one central person who's monitoring all of this because there are requirements, you've got, your honor, and I don't remember what they are now, but you're under a timeline to first just acknowledge that you've received the thing, you know, and you've got to make a response, and in an appropriate case, you tell them what it's gonna cost them, you know, because you can charge so much for time and so much per page for gathering.
If the municipality is of a certain size, though, you can't charge for certain stuff.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's very complicated.
That's why you're here, Larry.
I've been retired five years and I probably remember just enough to be dangerous, but you know, it's very complicated, and that's why it's very important to, you know, have a centralized response. And again, the other way, it, he could have gone, and probably would have been the better way to go, would be to, as part of the court process, request it through discovery, you know, but he chose to do it this way, so, you know, you've got to respond to it. But that would have, that would have funneled everything through town council.
Okay.
You know, rather than sending out different, public records requests from different entities.
So if you follow up on Monday, the clerk, and ask, and just explain what happened, ask for guidance, I would still make a copy of your notes and share it with Gretchen so she can see what the essence of what's going on is, and then ask her if she, if it's part of, if she would, if she knows what she's doing, if she knows the process, or is this something because it's handwritten, should this go to town council? Make sure you ask her that, and then I think we're covered for everything we just discussed.
Yeah, yeah. Ultimately, the decision in the litigation, ultimately the decision on what to provide really should be town council. But give county council everything you've got.
All right, what's the last one?
Next meeting, hearing date, Thursday?
No, I'm sorry, one more. Fifty-three, sorry, I couldn't put it on here, I apologize. It's the zoning decision for fifty-three Northern Boulevard to Cavillon Maritime from two thousand twenty-one. You guys approved the decision for the build of the dwelling, everybody approved that the decision was recorded, but now Cavillon has sold it to George Giannis, who's been going through the conservation process. So George wants the special permit transferred to his name, and he wants to build on the special permit, but it was signed on nine thirty, two thousand twenty-one. So from speaking with Peter, it's my understanding from him that George would have to apply for a building permit by nine thirty, twenty-three in order to exercise the two-year time on the special permit, but we don't know, so he's looking for us for an answer.
Yeah, we don't control ownership, we control use, so if somebody builds and is almost done with construction and they sell their house to the new owner, it is what it is. I think if he does need, that decision does need to be exercised within the window requirements is a must. The fact that it gets submitted to Peter, Peter may say, you're not the owner of the property, can I have a letter from the owner that gives you the authority in which to submit this building permit, then Peter's good to accept the building permit.
Yeah, it says here, he may be extended one year for good cause upon a written request by the building inspector.
So George did either fill out a building permit by the thirtieth or request an extension?
Right, and the only thing Peter would argue is like, you're not the rightful owner, so why, how do I know I'm dealing with the rightful person? Oh, I've got a letter that is stamped or, I don't know, notarized that says, you know, I respond, give Mario the right to submit the building permit, and I think we're good.
George is the rightful owner now on the deed.
So the special permits are transferable, that's what you're saying?
For two years, if you don't build on it.
Well, no, you're saying, you're saying that it's good for two years if you don't build on it, but is it transferable? Can you sell it? That's another question, that's what I'm asking.
And again, if the question came about of ownership of a piece of property, I don't think we have bylaws to monitor who can own what, but we just want to make sure that if somebody in any condition is coming before the town and saying, I've got this property I own far and away, and well, by the way, I'm gonna add this big addition and I want to get a variance, the first question I'd ask is, well, I own the property, so what are you doing? Oh, I'll give you a letter.
Yeah.
And so there's intent, and we have developers all the time come before us with, you know, Larry owns the property, but I'm here on his behalf to submit this proposal because in getting approval, I'm going to buy and complete the execution of the property.
To answer your question, Jack, that these permits run with the land, not with the individual?
Thank you.
So there is, I think, if you read the bylaw on the, but if you get to the accessory apartment, that may have to be.
Oh, that's one.
I remember that, it has to, stage of the person, they have to live in it for.
Yeah, but I think that doesn't transfer with the land, right? With the owner.
They have to submit a letter, I think, if there's a transfer, and then.
Yeah, I mean, there may be some exceptions like that, but the general rule, the permit, like a subdivision approval or a special permit or anything, as a general rule runs with the land.
I mean, there have been places where it's actually a special permit that's been granted for the use, and.
That's, yeah, I was gonna say that, if.
To an individual.
And he's claiming that he will follow the set plan exactly, what was proposed and agreed, he will adhere to that.
But that's Peter's enforcement to make sure what was the decision and what was filed is followed through on, no matter who owns what, because they'll have a building permit and they'll have it on record, and that's what they gotta do. I don't know where that use is listed, Martha, but that was something that I was thinking of too, if, like the Sunset Club, if somebody else was to come in and take that and try to change it, or the question also came before us about Georgie Forgie having a, you know, wanting to change the menu. I don't know if we actually control the menu other than control the use of, here's a building, they said they were gonna do walk-up service, they said they were gonna have a window, we said parking spaces and delivery spaces. If none of that is changing and they serve a hot dog instead of hamburger, that's not our, that's our purview.
Unless you have some rational reason to limit it to hot dogs.
Well, if it's written in specifically.
If it's written in there that you cannot serve hamburgers, I suppose, that's true.
But if he says, I'm going to set up, and I'm gonna build a deck, and I'm going to have wages and waiters serve meals outside, that is a different use than a walk-up window that was specifically requested and granted within that decision.
Yeah, no, I'd agree.
Yeah, so.
We talked about the occupancy requirements. It says the approval of an accessory dwelling unit requires, owner of record must occupy one of the dwelling units on this premise as his or her primary residence except for bona fide temporary absence for six months or less.
But that's for accessory apartments.
Right, right.
All righty then, that it?
The next date is October, so we don't have a meeting next week, the next meeting is October.
November nineteenth.
We do have a submittal, I'm sorry, I have to get it to you. It's for Nineteenth Independence Day. Doug has already brought questions up to Peter, legal counsel on it, so there are emails going back and forth answering some of the questions. So I have everything, I'll get it out by Monday.
The questions part of the documents we'll receive?
Some of the questions Peter had in order to formulate the denial letter, he had to speak to legal counsel in order to get the.
Okay, so we'll get some of those on these meetings.
Okay, I'd like to make motions to close the meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.